Did that make sense to you this time?
Good evening, and welcome to the school committee meeting of August 29th, 2018. As we start every meeting, I'd like to remind everyone this meeting is being recorded. It's also being broadcast live, so be aware of that. I'd ask you to please join me in a moment of silence. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, and welcome back. Today was the opening day at the schools, and we're going to get a report from the superintendent on that very shortly. First, we need to approve the minutes of June 20th, 2018.
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Abstaining. Unanimous, Michelle. Also, we need to approve the minutes of the meeting of August 15th, 2018. And I believe that was when we were at...
Whitman.
Selectmen.
Whitman Board of Selectmen.
Whitman Board of Selectmen's meeting, because we did, I think we did have a quorum or we were pretty close, but we took notes anyway. An entertainer motion?
Second.
Discussion?
The rule is, if you weren't there, you can still approve minutes.
Football?
If you weren't in attendance, you can still approve minutes.
Yes. Yes. You're just approving the document. Motion made and seconded. Michelle, you got them both?
Yep.
All those in favor? Okay. Unanimous. Thank you very much. As we get into the superintendent's report, and welcome aboard.
Thank you.
It gives us great pleasure to see that our new superintendent, Jeff Simonak, and our new assistant superintendent, Judge Ferrell, are both here. And I'm going to do something that I haven't done before, but this is, I'm going to jump into the very beginning. Opening of school for 2018 school year, 2019. In your handouts, you'll see that there is an addition, and it needs to be signed this evening, for the employee expected actions and behavior, employee code of excellence. The key word changed in this whole thing. Nothing has changed in this document, other than the word excellence.
Correct. You used to say conduct.
Yes. So I would entertain a motion to accept.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. I just need, we needed it to move forward. I have to sign it. Mr. Simonak, you can start your superintendent's report, if you would, please.
Excellent. Thank you. So we're going to talk about opening, both on Monday for teachers and today for students. I'd like to give you a brief briefing on what happened on Monday. All of our teachers arrived happy and energetic in the Performing Arts Center at 9:00 a.m. on the 27th. We were greeted by the chair of the school committee, who introduced George and myself. And Mr. Kafka then spoke on behalf of WHEA. George and I then spoke a little bit about our expectations for the year, some goals, what roles are for the two of us. And then we were able to present the Dr. John McEwen Do What's Best for Kids Award. Mrs. McEwen spoke to the staff. She gave them some sound advice from John. And Stephanie Powers, a teacher from Duval, was the award winner this year. Following that presentation, we brought in a guest speaker, Norm Bossio, who spoke about commitment to kids, never giving up on kids, and really giving a great motivational talk. He had teachers laughing, he had teachers crying, and he got to pick fun of, make fun of Bob and myself for being bald. So it was pretty good, all the way around. It was just a really good presentation. We dismissed the staff to a barbecue that was facilitated by our facilities department, Mr. Stanland and their crew, but it was sponsored by SJ Services, and we also had an ice cream truck sponsored by Collegiate Press. So no tax dollars were spent on our staff, and we were gracious and we were very thankful that they provided our lunch. Teachers then went to their buildings for staff meetings, and Tuesday, they worked on developing, getting their classrooms together. Tuesday, George and I went building to building, doing a little punch list for Ernie and his staff to make sure the buildings were ready for open house first, for all three elementaries, and then in preparation for this morning. It was a pretty lengthy punch list, and, you know, our facilities department is pretty awesome, because Ernie knocked it out of the park. Got emails from the three elementary teachers saying, wow, he got everything done. The buildings looked great for 4:30 yesterday, and I think parents were very excited about going to that open house. This morning, we opened up at 7:05 here at the high school with our new inner loop. Mr. Ferrell was out directing traffic, and traffic pattern worked fairly well. I think the grade was a B-plus on the first day of school. We then bounced from building to building for opening, and I want to thank both police departments and fire departments in both towns, giving high fives to all middle school and elementary school kids. So it was a great opening as they walked in. We went building to building, walked the halls, saw some teachers, made sure it was okay. It was a little bit warm in the buildings, to say the least. We had some issues with the A.C., even in the high school, to try keeping up with the heat. I had Ernie go out yesterday and buy 60 cases of 80 bottles of water per case, and distribute them to the elementaries, just in case they needed water. We encouraged staff to keep kids hydrated. And honestly, I had one complaint today about how hot is too hot, and it wasn't hot enough for us, because we did it. We had some issues with dismissal at a couple of the elementary schools. George and I were both at those, we're at Indian Head today, making some modifications to their dismissal process. Indian Head buses were running about a half hour late today. We got some information out to parents, a little bit later than I wanted to, but we thought that the process was going to go a little smoother. Chief Mix was on board with us all day today at Indian Head, and he helped us adjust that dismissal process. So I want to give a nice thank you to Chief Mix from Hanson and Officer Frazier, who was there on site. They were pretty warm. Billy was in his blues with his vest on. It was pretty hot out today. But all in all, I think the opening of school today was a huge hit for our kids. Our staff were tremendous. The kids were smiling. They were smiling on their way out, and I think they're ready to come back tomorrow. Okay. I'm moving right on into the district ops of the summer. As you know, we had a lot of things going on. I just want to hit you and let you know where we're at. At Indian Head, we did all our classrooms. We did those bathrooms. And as you know, the new playground was open and is ready to go, on time and on target. At the high school, we did the inner loop, the preschool, and the playground. The playground should be completed right after Labor Day, with the pad down and the fencing, okay? They couldn't go out there today, and they're probably not going to go out there tomorrow anyway. So that should be ready for next week. All our special education rooms at Duval are solid and ready to go. They were there today. The security entrances at Indian Head, Conley, and Duval are all set. We're still working on a camera at Duval. What we're doing is we're putting in a temporary camera and a temporary buzzer. The buzzer didn't work this morning. We noticed that this morning. It should be all set. But the entrances, both technologically and security-wise, are ready to go, and we're in use today at the three elementaries. And then the cameras in Duval and at the high school are currently being installed and upgraded. So on the whole, district operations, Ernie had a tremendous list. We believe in Ernie and his guys. We, the challenge at times were our general contractors that we had hired out, who would delay. We had a delay in the road out here by the contractor because of the heat. He had to give his guys days off. But our facilities folks themselves did yeoman's work. If there were any delays getting up to the deadline, the fence at Indian Head went up yesterday. It was contractual issue, not our folks. And again, Ernie pulled it out, and we were ready to go this morning. So if you get to tour around the building, if you haven't been on the playground at Indian Head, it's really, it's a phenomenal playground. I got to take pictures of Mr. Cullody and Mr. Small out there bouncing around. And it's just, I wanted to thank the taxpayers of Hanson for putting it in there. It's not for the kids of Indian Head, it's for the town. Now that it's open, we've put in a court for basketballs. We haven't have the hoops up yet, but they'll be there. There'll be some portable hoops that we can move in and out. But the facilities looked great for opening day. And when we were ending in June, all I asked Ernie was, let me know, so I can let the committee know if we're not going to hit our target. He said, we're going to hit our target. We're going to hit our target. Last week, we walked around, we did a couple of site visits. We, as a committee, went and toured. We have on local cable, and Tracy from the Express did an article on it. We were able to see how far you've come, and if you were to tour the facilities now, you'd see them as good as we wanted them to be on opening day. So the facilities, I want to just give a shout out to Ernie and his guys, and to Christine for supporting Ernie financially. They did a great job.
Questions, anyone?
Okay. A McQuon. So found, in the summer, as I transitioned in, we found a letter from May of 17 about the closing of McQuon, was supposed to be dated September 1st, this Saturday. I didn't know about that letter. I had a conversation with Mike McQ, Christine, and Ernie, and we came up with a date of September 30th, which actually works well within Ernie's range, to do our two yard sales, one for town offices and one for the general public. So I'm asking the committee, before we officially close McQuon, you voted on a September 1st deadline. I'd like to ask for permission to extend it to September 30th. That works with the town of Hanson and works with the school department.
I entertain a motion to extend the date to September 30th.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Fred?
Are we incurring any other liabilities in delaying by the 30 days, as far as any maintenance, anything to do with the building or the grounds?
No, we can keep up, it's the electric right now that we will incur for that month, and it's slim. I actually think giving Ernie and the facilities group an extra month with the town to try to secure that building is a good idea, because right now, there's not a plan in place on how to secure that building. And Mike and I had the discussion about windows and boards and things like that. And there are a couple of other items that different town officials have thrown by Mike to do something with the building, but right now, there's no plan, and I feel uncomfortable about keeping that building open without us being able to secure it within this month.
So we'd obviously need to do a couple of things. One is notify our insurance company.
Correct.
You know, we're pulling out. They may want to notify theirs from the town, because once we pull out, it's their building, their responsibility, and the rates are different whether you have it occupied or unoccupied.
They have the same insurance company, so it's going to be a smooth transition.
Okay. Chris?
Just from a technical standpoint, do we need to send some sort of letter to the town of Hanson and have them acknowledge that we're...
So after today's meeting, I'll follow up with that to them, that they've extended. It was a gentleman agreement between Mike and myself, and Mike was a little surprised by the date, too. It happened over a year ago, and they're trying to get some ideas of what to do with that facility.
There's actually a reuse committee meeting coming up. Mike sent out a thing to me that there is a reuse committee meeting coming up in September. Mike?
With that, I mean, the building is one thing, but also the fields, like parks and fields, are they notified that we're no longer mowing that field at some point, or taking care of that field at some point?
I'll have Ernie, right now, we're taking care of that.
No, right.
We'll work out that agreement to make sure that it's taken care of.
I was just going to say, I know Ernie and Bob Brown have already talked. They've been talking about that for months, so I know that they've already gone back and forth.
I just wanted to add, too, that there are two yard sales type things that are going to be going on from the surplus. I know Jeff mentioned it, but Wednesday, the 19th of September, will be for town offices, if there's anything they would like from the old McQuon. And Saturday, the 22nd, would be the publics. So those are the dates for the two yard sales that Jeff mentioned.
Anyone else having a motion and a second? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
George, driver's ed?
Okay, so the driver's ed program at Whitman-Hanson is changing a little bit, and we have a new person. The new person is a man by the name of Cliff Zednik, and one of the things he's doing to try to get it out of the ground and to keep it moving and to get it active again, is that he was proposing to send out a survey. Send out a survey of two questions to the people who'd be eligible for a driving education certificate. And what I'd ask is that, since there are only two questions, the two questions deal, the first question is, would you rather attend classes from 5:00 to 7:00 during the week? Would you rather attend them from 5:00 to 7:00, 2:00 to 4:00, or Saturday mornings? That was the question he'd like to send to prospective sophomores and juniors or seniors that don't have their license that would like to take it in Whitman-Hanson with the Whitman-Hanson driver's ed. And the second question dealt with, when are you most likely to take it? After school or Saturdays? That's his two-question survey that I know we needed to come by. I said on his behalf, we'd ask the committee if we would allow the student body who will be eligible for, well, I think it's going to go to the whole student body, to be honest with you, who are eligible for their license, what their times and what their availabilities are, so he can set classes for those prospective students.
An entertaining motion?
So moved. Second.
Everybody understands for the whole class, not just a few. So, okay. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
George?
Yep. I'd also like to turn your attention and let you know that the, I want to say this correctly, the Mayflower Municipal Health Group, they're having a breakfast, and they're here all invited on September 28th at 8:30 a.m. at the Mont Pontset Inn in Halifax. And there, they'll be discussing health insurance topics, and some of them included, but not limited to, are the Blue Vision 2020 program they're having, the health savings account, and the high deductible plan overview, prescription drugs, and other strategic plans discussions for FY '20 and beyond. The invitation came in. We wanted to make sure that you, as committee members, had that information, and it is on September 28th, 2018, at 8:30 a.m. at Mont Pontset.
Fred?
Are you going to need a head count?
Chris? Michelle?
Can I receive these two? You going again this year?
Anyone, well, let's take a survey of our own. Who's going?
I'm not sure. Maybe.
And I might go, depends on the week.
Okay. Okay. Any questions on that?
Okay. In your packet, there is an act relative to regional schools. I'll read that out to the record. This is a legislation change this summer. The regional school committee may designate one of its members for the purpose of signing payroll warrants and accounts payable warrants to allow for the release of checks provided. However, that the member shall make available to the board at its next meeting a record of such actions. This provision shall not limit the responsibility of each member of the board in the event of noncompliance with this section. So what I'm asking for is a vote from the committee of one person to follow this legislation to sign warrants and payroll accounts.
An entertaining motion?
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Fred?
I, myself, would be against just one person signing a warrant. Some people go in and just will sign, skim it. Other people will read in more depth. And especially where this provision doesn't limit my responsibility, I feel more comfortable that within our current three-person framework, that out of the three people, one person is going to go into a good-depth structure in reading the warrant before signing. That's my personal opinion.
Chris?
So I share a lot of Fred's perspective. I think it is a challenge to get folks to come in and sign. I get that. But we're all human, we can all make mistakes. I think having three sets of eyes is certainly better than one. There's a chance if I miss something, I might catch it, vice versa. The other thing is, I'm not sure we would actually get a member of the committee that would want to do this. So before we get too far down this, I think we want to think about that as well. We could vote and say, hey, we want to give this responsibility to one member, but I'm not sure we're going to have anyone that wants it, so just food for thought.
Anyone else? I'm sorry.
No, go ahead. Dan, you go first. Explain the question.
I'm pretty much on the same, having just one. Like Chris said, one of one set of eyes can catch something. And you've got to realize, we're all on the hook when one person's signing. So if you want to leave to one person, something goes out, that's, everybody's on the hook.
Robbie?
Mine's more of a question, and I guess it deals with liability that I'll put out to Christine or whoever else. So we're on the hook whether three sign it, one signs it all, or sign it. Does it more fall on Christine and the treasurer, or how does that work, liability-wise?
Christine, you want to go?
Not sure. I know the answer to that question. I do know that when they did the Modernization Act last year, they didn't address regional schools. So municipalities now only require one signature for their payroll warrants and for their accounts payable warrants. And I think that this is because they missed regional agreements in the Modernization Act last year. I'm not sure what the liability is, but I know that other municipalities have voted to have one to sign the warrant and one alternate, and then to report out at the next meeting what you would, like Michelle has the subcommittee, warrant subcommittee minutes that will be reported out. It has been a challenge, especially during the summer, to have three signatures. We can't release checks unless we have three signatures. So I would find this to be very helpful to our department.
Thank you, Christine.
Thank you. I'm just...
I actually have a question.
This is, what did I do?
I want to hold this.
No. You want to talk?
Yeah, I have a question.
Bob? Go ahead.
I don't see a problem with one person signing it. I know we sort of have a check and balance, as it is, between Christine and David, so there's two people that look it over. I'm sure the superintendent looks it over. I don't know if George looks it over or not. But I don't see a problem if the other cities and towns do that. I don't see what the problem would be with us doing that. And like you say, if three people sign it, we're still vulnerable. If one person signs it, we're still vulnerable. If it streamlines the process, then I would be in favor of it.
Ellie?
My question is just, it says that you may appoint one person, doesn't mean you have to.
We're taking a vote on it. We're going to vote on it.
It's all the same. What's it really matter, what fits one or the other?
Well, they want you to vote whether you're going to designate one or remain the same.
Right.
So a vote yes would be saying, yes, we're going to allow one person to sign it. A vote no would be remaining the same.
Right. What I'm seeing is, I feel that we should just leave it the way it is. More eyes, the better. I think it probably would be too much to say, hey, you know what? You're going to be responsible for coming to sign all this. What if you have something to do, you can't get here, and it needs to be signed right away? I think it's better if we have multiple people who can do it.
Robbie?
So I just have a question, because Christine brought up that checks don't get paid. So my question is, does that happen with payroll checks if, for some reason, three of us don't come in and sign? The teachers don't get paid? So my concern is that the teachers and the staff, they get paid whether we get there in time to do their three signatures and not?
Correct. But any of the other payroll checks, we hold?
Like for ABC contractor?
For insurance checks?
Okay.
Stuff like Robbie, I think would, to simplify it, Bob has 30 different referees a week. That doesn't get sent out until the warrant's assigned, correct?
Yeah, okay.
But the normal payroll does. Mr. Boyce?
So yearly, when we do our appointments, we appoint an assistant treasurer on this committee. And I'm sorry, I just don't know the name, who that might be. I did it one year.
Dan.
Oh, hi, Dan. And I don't know if that would be, probably if it is a one person, that person. I also want to, it's a question, but it's also to throw it out there. I also want to share on the Pilgrim Area Collaborative, our treasurer comes to each monthly meeting and reads to the board of directors into, we won't vote on it, but into the minutes, what all the payroll and accounts payable warrants are. And he has them numbered out and everything. I'm not looking to change the whole structure, but I, you know, efficiency and so forth. I mean, I would certainly put a lot of trust in Mr. Cullody or Mr. Trotter, or any of you, but I understand totally, you know, what you're saying by having the board of three or having three members do this. I totally agree with that. And you know, my feeling on our accountability, we're accountable to the voters and so forth. And that was one of the things that was a sticking point when the North River Collaborative, we voted on that to change it, although I voted to keep it moving along, so just a little bit longer than I thought.
Chris?
I've had a reputation, goes back to Craig Finley, when it comes to signing warrants, because I sit and read everything. And not that I'm looking for, but very often, you will find a document missing, or you have a question. Christine's always been very good and very responsive in resolving, you know, the questions, but these things do happen. And I just think that the more set of eyes to make sure, the better off we are.
Mr. Chairman? Okay. Anyone else? Fred? Bob?
Excuse me. Have we had a problem with our warrants?
No. This, Bob, is just something that they voted, you know, the House...
No, I understand, but Fred said he's found a couple of things. Habitual problem, or most of our warrants pretty clean between David, you, superintendent? I mean, there's really no major issues with the warrant.
Well, there's a lot of processes already in place before
Right.
you, as the board, would sign the actual warrant or payroll warrant. So there's a process from purchasing to making it, from requisition to a purchase order, to when the goods are received, to when they're received, to when we get the invoices, where it oriented from, then that person who placed the order signs off that they received the goods. And when they put it in, it goes through a chain of approvals. So we're all looking at the account number, if it's in the right place. No one can overspend their line. If the line is $10,000, they can't even put in $10,001. So all those safeguards are already in place. And when it comes to you signing the warrant, I mean, Fred alluded to, you know, finding in questions, I answer the questions. Some things, yes, sometimes things are missing. But the problem here is that we have a warrant subcommittee, but finding it very difficult to get three signatures in a timely manner, especially this summer, when we had all these contractors here working. I couldn't release the checks, because I couldn't get anyone to come in and sign the warrants. So by this way, if we have one person that comes in and signs a warrant, and we have an alternate, then that he or she can report out at the next meeting on minutes, like Michelle has done with the warrant subcommittee.
I'd just like to remind the committee that one of the things that a school committee does is sets budgets and sets policies. And this appears to me to be a budgetary issue as far as where the money's going, as we represent the taxpayers. So is there anything new before we move to the vote?
One thing, we amended to have, would you like the payroll to be one?
Well, I was more concerned about the staff payroll, and that's, they get paid no matter what. So that's what I was concerned about, because the last thing I want to do is hold up a teacher or another staff or something, getting paid. And they do, so.
All right. I'm all set.
Anyone else? Now, if you vote yes, it's, yes means you're approving the regional school committee's one designate to sign. If you vote no, it stays currently the way it is. Chris?
One designated, one alternate, right?
I'm sorry?
One designated and one alternate, right?
Yes, vote.
Yes.
I would suggest that only designate one of the designate if they're...
Sure.
Or something happens.
Ill, something like that.
Well, we're accepting the act that is a House vote, number 271, is what we're accepting.
I don't see...
It doesn't say a designate. It may designate one of its members for the purpose of signing payrolls, accounts, and release of checks. And that's what we're voting on, is this document that the House... Can we put an amendment to that?
You can change it down to one, this is what it says.
Yeah. It doesn't say anything about an alternate, though, if we adopt this law.
Can we amend that?
Do you have one?
Doesn't say that you can.
This is the legislation that we are provided.
I think the committee, if you wanted to appoint one person and then appoint an alternate
for the sake of somebody...
We can do that, yeah.
You have the ability to do that.
Now, you're designating two people, not one, and the act is that you can designate one. I mean, I'd say it's a legal question.
No, it doesn't say you can. It's open-ended. It says business.
Okay, so back to the vote. If you vote yes, you're accepting, as a school committee, to have one member, and we can change that to two. Or if you vote no, we're going to stay at the three that we're at, then we can all, we can change that to one and one as a committee. But we're voting on the document as presented. So all those in favor of House number 271 as presented in your packet that was read word for word? All those in favor? Three. All those opposed? Seven, I think.
It's 10.
Three and seven, so we're good. Good thing it didn't add up. Good thing that didn't come to 11, Michelle. It would have been a problem. Bob? Chris? And Robbie? Okay.
Hey, Bob. Before we close that out, so I think, can we just, can we reaffirm to make sure that we have a good commitment to try and make sure? Because I'm as guilty as everyone else. Like, stuff happens. But let's just try and make sure that we sign these as quickly as possible. And if that turns into an issue, then maybe we need to revisit this to later times. Is that fair?
Took the words right out of my mouth. That was going to be my next little fling into it. Please make efforts to make it easier for Christine to pay the different vendors, because it's important, especially when you're doing business with outside vendors that, maybe small vendors that need to make payroll at the end of the week also. It's important for them to get paid. We don't want to be known as a slow pay fee.
Right.
We want to be known as on time.
Thank you, folks.
Next one. You have one more thing?
Yes.
Closeout line items?
Closing out budget. Christine? Thank you.
In your, the handout that Michelle gave you tonight is the closeout transfer. Second transfer of the year is just closeout for June. And it makes, there's no change in the bottom line. It's just moving the money around to close out the year.
So Christine, this is just moving, there's absolutely, like it says at the bottom, no change to the bottom line. It's just putting it in, just putting it in different accounts.
That's right.
I entertain a motion to accept.
So moved.
Second.
Who made, who moved?
Ellie.
Okay. Second, Fred?
Second discussion.
Yeah, go ahead.
If you could, so this is for FY '18.
Correct.
If and when the Commonwealth of Mass ever votes the supplemental budget that they pass, or the governor proposed and that is supposedly going to be passed by the House and Senate in informal session at some point, we will realize some monies...
That's correct.
For transportation. And the only place we can put those monies at this point, because we've closed out the books, is E and D.
No, we could, a couple of years ago, this board voted to have a transportation revolving account.
Okay.
And you can vote to put that in there, and then we can use it right away if we need to. Or it can be, that's really the only place. And the other one is Circuit Breaker, and that is also a revolving account.
Okay.
So both of the monies, even if we receive them in late fall or early winter, there's two revolving accounts that they can go to.
If I could elaborate, just so everyone's aware, Governor Baker had done a supplemental budget that increased our regional transportation funds by about $100,000, I believe.
That close to that?
For FY '18, even though FY '18 was pretty much over. So if we ever see that money, it'll be those monies, there was some Circuit Breaker money, and safety and security...
Correct.
On a three-year plan to go toward building improvements, I think...
Counselors.
Counselors and police officers.
Correct.
That, you know, we'll be applying for those grants hopefully in the very near future. And some of that, hopefully retroactively, where we spent money in FY '18 on some of the security items in the buildings, we would be able to hopefully get some money back.
Correct.
Yep, correct.
And that, we're hoping sometime mid to late October to see that. And then we can bring that forth and have that discussion.
Cross the fingers and pray that it gets out of, I think in some ways it means something. It's crazy. And that's a legislative report, too.
Any further discussions about the line item transfers? All those in favor?
Thank you.
Unanimous. Christine, you may as well stay right there for the budget certificate. Jeff, do you have anything?
No, I do not.
Any questions? Any questions for Jeff about his superintendent's report?
No, thank you.
You've successfully completed your first superintendent's report. Okay. Christine?
So in your packet that was sent out to you last week, it said, "Votify to certify the 2019 budget." And on the bottom, there's a chart that shows the preliminary Chapter 70 numbers, and then the final, and then the net change. Do you all have that?
Mm-hmm.
So in the Chapter 70, it increased by $37,850. Charter reimbursement went down by just over $25,000. And transportation reimbursement was up by 100, just over 104,000. The net change being an increase of $116,342. Then on the expense side, the sped assessment from the state was $39,589 increase. School choice also increased by $34,793. And the charter school assessment actually went down by $22,865. So that left a net increase of $64,915 to equal the $116,342. The original, the preliminary budget that was in May after the town meetings was $50,406,749. The final, with this increase of $116,432, would be $50,525,101. $181.
Ian?
Christine, just wanted to go over one number there. $116,000, is it 342 or 432?
432.
All right.
Okay, so the vote, the motion will be, because I have to read it, to certify the FY '19 budget accordance with the PK to 12 Whitman Hansen Regional School District Amendment, Section 4, Paragraph D and E, in Master General Law's Small C, Section 70 with 2 at $50,523,181. I entertain a motion to...
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Boyce?
So I never know when to insert this question, but we got, we did the closeout, and thank you for that, and thank you for this as well. Past fiscal years encumbered monies, can we be provided a list of that?
Sure. After I do the closeout, when I send everything to the Department of Ed, I mean, Department of Revenue...
Yep.
For the certification of our E and D, I certainly can do that.
Right, okay. Yeah, I told you, I didn't know where the question, naturally need to ask the question, but, and I know you'll remind me again next year. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yes, no problem.
Anyone else? All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Christine.
Amended regional agreement update. As you know, we can report it. If you want to jump in, there's three of us that want to discuss.
So I was just going to give you an update. I don't have, I have a prelim update on Whitman, but I did receive a letter on August 21st from Hanson and their Board of Selectmen, and I'd like to read that into the record. "Please be advised that the Hanson Board of Selectmen voted unanimously on Tuesday, July 24th, 2018, to approve the amended regional agreement dated June 6, 2018. An article will be placed on the October 1st, 2018 special town meeting for town meeting approval. Once the agreement is approved by town meeting, please forward the original sign for the board signature." So Hanson has approved the regional agreement at this point, and I believe there's some discussion still in Whitman.
Okay. As of last night in the town of Whitman, there were some questions as to a section on page 9B on 10% of the voters. The selectmen have been, they feel that they would like to have some input on amending part of the regional agreement without getting 10% of the voters. They would like to be able to have the vote to bring it to town meeting and let town meeting approve it. So they have not voted to approve it yet. The problem with it is, we were hoping to get this town meeting in Hanson's fall town meeting to get approved. This may push it off until May. I tried to get ahold of someone today. I'm going to talk to Frank tomorrow and see if he wants to print up language of exactly how the Whitman Board of Selectmen would like it to read. And then it will have to go to the attorneys again and make sure it's legal. Then we'll have to get it back and make sure Hanson's okay with it if it is changed, and they're going to have to revote it. So what Jeff just told you is going to sort of get nullified. And then it's got to go to DE and DESI to make sure that they're going to approve it if there's any change. Because the town, the town of Whitman wants a change. So the process probably, the amended agreement's probably going to end up in the May 2019 town meeting, because I don't think we're going to get that done by the fall town meeting for Hanson. I really, I think it'll be a, I mean, I'd like to think we could do it, but it's, there's a lot of, lot to be done. Anyone else?
Well, Whitman doesn't have a meeting again until next May, so it couldn't be ratified, you know, either way.
Yeah.
And I believe they also had, still back and forth on the language on withdrawal. And prior, and I thought the attorneys had worked things out, it was their concern, the current agreement reads that either town can withdraw PK through eight. And the agreement would continue on, so to speak. That was done in the original agreement. The way things are done now, the way they would consider it, if either town withdraws and you want to continue, you need a new agreement to continue for a high, regional high school. So it's a moot point to say that you're going to pull out, you know, K through eight, or PK through eight. So I think that there's still a little bit of discussion going on in Whitman about that as well.
Well, we're probably going to have to reconvene the amendment committee, get all the members back together, maybe get the Whitman Board of Selectmen to come to straighten this out. But it looks like it's going to get pushed off until May town meeting, which is not a big, big deal.
But...
So what we can do if the committee approves is I can contact the selectmen in Hanson and say, "We're not set on the Whitman side," and pull it off as an agenda item for town meeting.
Well, I think we can leave it on, and I'll be at town meeting, and I'll just ask them to pass over it.
Perfect.
Because once you remove it, they're going, they're going to have to, they've closed the warrant. So you really can't remove it. When it gets to it, I'll get up and just ask for it to be passed over.
Perfect.
And if by some freak of nature we get it done, which I doubt it's going to, we'll move forward. So we're okay. And as Fred said, Whitman can't vote it until May anyway, because they don't have a fall town meeting. So we're okay. We've got plenty of wiggle room to move forward with.
And the Whitman piece is, or the concern is just that Section 9?
Yes.
Okay. No?
Well, that and the withdrawal, the next section.
Well, Section 9 is the withdrawal.
Yeah. He said page 9, Section 9.
Oh. I didn't bring my pages.
Yeah.
I'm doing it electronically.
Section 9 and Section...
What we'll do is we'll get them here, see if they can come to one of the committee meetings for the amendment committee. It's 9B.
Right, but, but then, instead of...
Oh, right.
That's not Section 10. I'm horrible with my Roman numerals.
No, but you're right.
IX is, the section after Section 9 is...
It's Section 6. Nope, Section 7B procedure.
Page 9.
I believe that's where he's talking about.
Yeah, but it's actually...
A proposal of amendment, accept a proposal for amendment providing for the withdrawal of number town.
Section 7B procedure, correct.
That's where the 10% of registered voters is.
Okay. Well, we'll invite them to a meeting, and we'll convene the committee again and see if we can't get this all worked out. I'm sure we're going to get it worked out. Even if we have to change the language a little bit to do it, I'm sure we'll get it worked out.
That's it.
So that's, any other questions about the amended regional agreement? It's an update, and I was telling you where we're at.
That's eight.
Okay. As you know, we talked about the fuel efficiency, the green community fuel efficiency vehicle policy for the town of Hanson. To vote it, it allows the town to apply for certain monies that I believe Whitman's already accepted it. Am I correct, Whitman?
Yes.
So it's strictly a vote in the town of Hanson. I entertain a motion to accept.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor? Seeing Mr. Rogers is here.
No, Bob, I'm abstaining. I just want that on the record.
901 extension.
Thank you.
High school school board update.
All right, I hope this is, last time I took a little bit of time. I think we're going to be kind of quick this time. I'm also just going to pass out while passing the information out, this is the end of the year athletic report that I give to you, to everybody here.
When did you find time in between everything else you've been doing?
Yeah, I know. Great.
Pictures are coming.
Get the pictures. Scoreboard update.
I think I have. Oh, shoot, I took two.
You can have the extra.
There's trees there, Mr. Rogers.
You can take those. Yeah, give me a couple, Bob, and I might, I might use it for, there you go. Okay.
All right, so the purpose of us coming here tonight was just to, the scoreboard's going to probably, knock on wood, is going to probably going up on Tuesday, at least if everything falls into place. It's a really complicated, much more complicated project than we really envisioned when we started this. But with that, with the scoreboard going up, I think a lot of people in the community are going to see this and go, oh my God, this school must be, have tons of money, because they're putting up something that's going to be so nice. And we're going to be, people are going to come to our facility and be wowed by this scoreboard. But I wanted to go on the record to make sure everybody knows that not a single taxpayer dollar is going to be spent on this scoreboard. We've also decided, you guys, at the, at the meeting before we adjourned for the summer, this committee gave us permission to lease this so that we could spread out the payments over a period of time. And Christine and I researched that and discussed it, and we decided not to do that because we didn't want to add any more cost to this project, which was already very expensive. Through previous fundraising, through previous gate receipts and things like that, I've been able to pay for the project right now, and I'm reimbursing that previous fundraising that I've done. That's from the athletic revolving account, from the sponsors that we've been able to get so far. And I'm pretty optimistic about where this is headed. So if you look, first of all, I wanted you guys all to see how beautiful the scoreboard is, so you can see what it's going to be. That scoreboard is going to really help drive culture for not just our school, but I think for our community as well. We'll be able to put all kinds of messages on that board that will be seen, not just at high school events, but through youth sports as well. If you look at page two of what I, the handout I gave you, kind of details where we've raised some money so far, the J.J. Frisoli Foundation, we've been very fortunate to have the family of J.J. Frisoli recognize that Whitman Hansen was such a big part of his life, and they've done fundraising. J.J. passed away on March 13th of 2017, and in his honor, they've been doing fundraising. And last year, they recognized several Whitman Hansen students with athletic scholarships, or I should say scholarships for college. And in addition to that, they have donated $25,000 to us, and his name and picture will be up on the board. And I think he was a great representative of Whitman Hansen stands for. In fact, the entire Frisoli family is. And so aside from getting the money, it's great to be able to honor somebody like that. Rich Rosen, who everybody knows, who just loves Whitman Hansen, has generously decided to become one of the sponsors for the scoreboard to the tune of $10,000. You guys will have to approve, this committee will have to approve, these figures when I'm done here, because you got, the committee sets the advertising rates here. He will be splitting his board, if you look at the picture I gave you, it's, that's not what it's going to look like, but it will be between his restaurant and his realty business. And Mutual Bank will also take a full panel for $10,000. I have two panels left, and I have three, what I would consider really strong possibilities of companies who might come and help us with that. So if that does sell out, that will be $65,000, getting us really close to what is going to probably be when we're all done, we'll probably be close to $110,000 when you consider the installation and everything we're doing. the installation and everything we're doing. If you go to the next page, this is where I think, when I presented this to you in June, one of the messages that I had for you, aside from driving culture and being something that we're all going to be really proud of, I see this as a great opportunity for us to have a continuing revenue source for the district long after I'm gone. And all of us here are probably going to be gone, we're going to be able to sell advertising that will be meaningful advertising to the businesses in town. Like so, for example, towards the end of the game, the restaurants might want to have their advertising up to say, "Hey, when the game's over, stop in," and they can get a second dinner crowd. I've had several restaurants already tell me, "Well, I'm locked in, I will definitely do that." So, and we also have the ability to do things like happy anniversary, happy birthday, congratulations on your acceptance to college, whatever it is, for small, you know, $25 at a time or whatever it is. I think that once this board is paid, we're going to have this as a revenue source, which we desperately need because, as you know, the athletic budget is, because our entire budget is tough. We don't pay for uniforms, we don't pay for game officials, we don't pay for buses, we don't pay for equipment, we don't pay for our athletic trainer. All of those things have to come through my office, through fundraising and user fees and things of that nature. So this is the proposal that I have for you to vote and approve tonight. These rates will probably change over the years because we're kind of just testing this out and see how it's going to go. But one of the ideas that we had, and it's been really well received so far, I actually spoke to the, some of the club advisors, is I will give the teams and the clubs in the school the opportunity to sell advertising on that board. So for example, if student council wants to raise money for maybe one of their conferences and they want to sell six or seven ads for that board for the football season or for the soccer season or even for a single game, they can do that and we will give them half of the proceeds. The other half of the proceeds in the beginning will go towards paying the cost of the scoreboard. And then once we're done, that will go back into the athletic account to be able to pay for uniforms and things like that. This will evolve, there's all kinds of possibilities of what we can do. We can have, one of the things we're going to probably do once the board gets up, if you're familiar with the concept of the fifth quarter, one of the things that we do in the athletic department quite a bit is trying to educate kids about making healthy decisions and having fun things to do that don't involve drugs and alcohol. After a football game, we can play a movie on that scoreboard. So after the Panthers beat Marshfield on opening night, we can invite all the kids to stay and maybe watch Ferris Bueller's Day Off or some other kind of movie. So it's going to be, it's going to be really something special. So what I'm asking for the committee tonight, number one, I wanted to acknowledge the fact that no taxpayer dollars will be spent on this. And I also wanted the committee to be able to approve the advertising rates that I've set forth in this document, recognizing that at some point I'll be back to you to ask to change some of these if I'm finding that it's too expensive or maybe not expensive enough or whatever it is, we'll learn as we go. And I would also ask the committee just to give me the latitude to, because I will be trying to sell these to sometimes sweeten the pot, to be able to tell a business, "Oh, you do this," I'll throw in a couple of extra ads or whatever it is, because that's kind of how you sell if you, if anybody's ever, well, you guys, a lot of people here do sell. Sometimes you have to make it look a little bit more attractive. But this would be the general outline of what we would do.
Bob, could you add, would it be tying hands to say we're going to vote this year to year?
That would not tie my hands at all. I mean, in fact, I would probably want to come back in June and let you know how it did and let you know exactly how much money we raised and where we are. I'm hoping, I'm hopeful that, I met with the Football Gridiron Club last night, they're optimistic they're going to be able to raise some money with this. After I meet with you, I didn't want to be presumptuous for the, I had to meet with them because they were producing something else that involved that advertising. But after this meeting tonight, I will be speaking to all of the fall sports teams to try to get them on board. So in June, I would love to come back and maybe revisit it and get feedback from you and feedback from my coaches and the community on what they think, how we can make this thing be something special. Scoreboard's going to go right and directly in the middle. Those of you who have been at the field where the current flagpole is, we're going to put it at the base of that hill and the flagpole's going to be relocated to the right and the scoreboard's going to be right at the base of that hill. So you'll be able to see, you'll be able to see it now unobstructed by any poles, any, anything at all in the stadium.
So I won't have to jump up and stick my head out the window?
That's right, that's right. You'll be able to see it nice. We also, we also, the youth football uses this as well, and I'm going to open that up as an opportunity. It may not work for them this year, but for next year, any of the youth teams that use our facility for games, to give them the opportunity to put their sponsors on the board with the provision that they recognize that they would be giving Whitman-Hanson 50% of the revenue they get from any advertising they put on the scoreboard. And if they choose not to do that, I, we have the ability, if you look at the scoreboard, we have the ability to let them control just this part of it, which is the scoreboard part that they need. And I can program this part, I could actually do it from home or I could pre-program it before it's there and I could put advertising on. So if I know that Whitman-Hanson's hosting the youth Super Bowls, which sometimes we do and we know there's going to be thousands of people here, we might want to even just get one or two sponsors to say, "Hey, do you want to be on that board all day today?" So I think there's great opportunity for us.
Entertain a motion to accept as you just heard a detailed conversation with Mr. Rogers and give him the latitude to work this out for one year only with the report coming to us in June and a revote.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Dan?
To touch on what you were just saying, Bob, you answered one of my questions, was like how are we going to regulate these sports youth leagues coming in? But the number two part is the advertisement going up there, how do we know the, you'll have it pre-staged before games and events or, just to make sure it goes with our advertising rules of regulation?
Right, well, that's what I'm, you know, we won't advertise, you know, cigarettes or, you know, things that would not be school appropriate. We will, you know, I'm hoping that Damian's, who's such a really big member of our community, I'm hoping that they, just their pizza place, but they do sell alcohol. I mean, most, Metal Brook is a restaurant, but they sell alcohol. I think we all have to recognize that that's something that we, we're not promoting alcohol when we say, "Go to Damian's," we're promoting a family establishment that a lot of people go to.
Winions and Burgers.
But let me, with that said, Dan, with that said, if you ever see or you ever hear of advertising that's up there that you, anybody on this committee feels like is something that we would want to revisit, just let me know and we would revisit it.
And I was just going to add.
Go ahead.
Couple of quick points. One, I would love to see, and as a matter of fact, we've discussed it, within our DECA program, within anything that we would have to tie a student project into selling advertising to the real world. You know, that real life experience.
Fred, we have a sports marketing class and I've spoken to that teacher about not even just selling the advertising, that could be a component to it, but again, promoting different athletic events that we have to give them real life experience and selling advertising could be part of that. Our student council, for a lot of different groups, it could be a good experience for the students to understand what it means to look professional, to walk into a business, present themselves and have a, you know, and to sell on their be. The thing I like about this more than anything else is I really feel like the businesses that put money into this, it's going to be a good investment for them. Whereas a lot of times, I sometimes like kind of put my head down when I ask for donation because it really is just a donation that it's in a book that very few people will see. This is something that's going to have lots of eyes on it.
Oh, I mean, just, you know, hungry after the game.
That's correct.
You've got a visiting team here with their parents.
Yes.
You know, it makes sense for a restaurant to advertise.
Yep.
You know, going back home, we're on the way.
Yep.
I mean, if they take a little bit of time, they can really...
You probably didn't have a time, a chance to read the whole thing, but one of the provisions that we have in here, we're not going to put a ton of advertising that includes audio because that, we will, I'm hoping like maybe no more than four or five of those a game because those can be annoying. So like maybe at the end of the first quarter, if somebody has an ad that includes audio, like Friendly's or something like that, we might include that. I don't know if you guys know, but the Whitman-Hanson students are in that Friendly's commercial. If you've seen that Friendly's commercials, those are all Whitman-Hanson students in that. Whitman-Hanson athletes, they selected our school of all the schools last year to be included in that. So, yeah, so I hope that answers the question, Fred.
Good.
I was just going to remind the committee that we voted a policy a few years back as it checks and balances. So Bob approves a message, Dr. Jones then has to approve it and it comes to the superintendent's desk as well. It's a three-way check to make sure that it goes within what we think is our common decency and goes with the policy.
I know we can control our own, but if we're going around the leagues, why aren't they sure, we're on the same guy line? And one more question. Besides just the sports games?
I'm sorry?
Have you considered using this like movie nights or anything like that?
Yeah, we're going to, like I said, when we do the fifth quarter, I hope we'd use it as, we'd have a movie night, have the kids stay there and watch a movie, all kinds of different things. Obviously, the terrible tragedy that just happened in Orlando with, what happened at that e-gaming thing, but down the line, we have a great e-gaming club here. And, you know, after, you know, a period of time, that is something that I think the kids would really enjoy to have the championship out at the field where everybody can go ahead and see it. There's just, there are endless possibilities. Dr. Jones today, for example, on his first day, had the welcome sign Wednesday, which a lot of you guys may have seen. But that's like the kind of thing, like on Fridays, we take the pictures and we show them at the football game for people, parents that may not be on Twitter. There's just so many things that we can put on, we have Town Meeting coming up, for example. We can put it up on the board. Hey, get to Town Meeting. I mean, all kinds of different things, just information that people will see. It's going to be really positive for us, once we get through the headaches of putting it in, because it's a lot more difficult than I thought.
Anyone else? You have a motion, a second? All those in favor? Thank you, Bob.
And I just have, I also handed this out to you about the premium parking thing because I did want to make sure that, I did meet with you last year as well to talk about that idea of selling the parking places. I've kind of gone back and forth on whether we were going to do this or not. And I met with the Football Gridiron Club, which is at the direction of, somebody on the committee, I think it might have been Bob Trotter or Fred that asked me to make sure that they were on board. When we first started, people's first reaction to this, as you might expect, was one of like horror that, "Oh, my gosh, you're going to charge for parking." But once, I was always able to talk to people about it, then they loved it. And I got to the point where I, and I spoke to Fred about a week and a half ago and said, "I think I'm going to table it for this year and then maybe come back and revisit it." Well, when I met with the Gridiron Club, who was the people, who are the people that are the most affected by this, because they're the ones that have to pay admission to watch their kids play and now they're talking about they'll have to pay to park their cars, they actually did a 180 and they're like, "We really want to do it this year, we really want to try it." They, so I met with them and what we've decided, just to, I don't think we have to vote it again, because I think you gave me the authority to do this, we're going to have a two-day window where we're going to open up selling, so that we're not selling it all year and we might end up only selling 20 spots. Whatever sells in those 48 hours are what we will sell. And those will be the only spots that will be reserved and we'll start right at the baseball backstop and we will cone them off. Everybody who buys a pre-reserved spot will have their spot with their, with a cone on it with their number and we'll have some, a parent will be a volunteer to be in the parking lot, we'll just remove the cones when people arrive. So it will be $100. We were going to do something separate for Thanksgiving, we're not going to do that anymore. It's going to be the entire season, which includes every home game, including playoffs and Thanksgiving, they'll get a designated spot, it will cost them $100. There'll be a 48-hour window beginning on Tuesday after Labor Day and it will be all done online, they'll purchase online, they'll pay online and they'll get a reply in terms of where their parking space is online. But then, once that's done, we won't sell anymore. All the proceeds of this will go to the football team. This is going to be a fundraiser for them. They, again, I don't have much of a budget, we just had 18 helmets that were rejected and they bought all 18 of those helmets. They buy all of the blocking dummies, they buy all of the uniforms, they pay for the extra assistant coaches that were cut out of the budget a couple of years ago. They do tremendous work and so their fundraising, this will be a nice component to them, plus they're, most of the people that buy this, I'm not going to say all of them, but most of the people that are going to buy this will be football parents, maybe cheerleading parents and band parents as well, but mostly football parents. And so that's where the money's going to go.
Are we talking 12:01 a.m.? What time?
They'll probably be about 9:00 a.m. on Tuesday morning. I will send out a mass email to everybody that's in Infinite Campus with Whitman-Hanson and that's how everybody will go ahead and get that. And again, this is a trial, we'll try it this year, see what kind of reaction we get and then decide from there.
Any other questions? We've already voted on this. I think this is just an update to the original plan was to block the whole parking lot off.
Right. I don't, my guess is, I mean, I don't, actually, I can't even tell you how it's going to go. We might get none, we might get 50. I mean, the parents at the Gridiron Club last night said, it's going, every single parent's going to buy one, but I don't know. Again, for those people that don't get it, it's a really short walk from up top, and I guess I'm killing my sales, but it is a very short walk when you park up here. So, thank you, everybody. And the football team, actually, all athletics start, games start next week. WHAthletics.com is the best place to get that. But we're really excited about the football opener. Our football team is picked to be one of the best in the state this year. We have, our quarterback was selected as number two in the state by the Boston Herald. Ethan Phelps was also a phenomenal student athlete, GPO, more than, GPA of over 4.0. He was a MIA Student of the Month last year, which was a great honor. The team has great kids, lots of great senior leadership. They host Marshfield on Friday night. My guess is, as long as we have good weather, my guess is it'll be the biggest home attendance that we've had in the last 10 years, if we have great weather. It should be a phenomenal community night. We're really trying hard to get that scoreboard up if we can. So if anybody, by the way, if anybody knows any advertisers, I'm still looking for those two more. I think I have a couple, but if you know anybody, it's expensive, it's 10 grand, so. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Bob. Next up, Warren Articles, October special Town Meeting for Hanson. We have one Warren Article, to see if the town will vote to transfer some money from the amount appropriated in the May 2016 Annual Town Meeting, Article 12, Item 3, lift for high school bleachers and/or raising appropriate a transfer from free cash or available funds to construct a handicap ramp to the existing press box at the high school. By eliminating the explanation for this, by eliminating the lift elevator and installing a handicap ramp, there will be less maintenance and inspection costs. Estimated cost of $70,000, which the town of Hanson share will be 40.18%, which is $28,126. An entertain a motion to accept?
Second.
Discussion. I think I can explain this for all of you that know, this high school is about 13 years old now. That handicap elevator has been broke more than it's been used, it's finally been removed. I mean, literally, I come to almost every home football game and, Bob, how many times it's just, the way they're designed, it sits at the bottom and the snow's this deep and the switches are down here. And it just inevitably is broke. By constructing a ramp up to the press box so it's handicapped accessible, there is no maintenance. It's just like the aluminum ramp that you see in the bleachers, it's going to come so it's got the right grade going up so it is accessible to get there. It's a little more costly in the beginning, but if you saw what we've paid to fix the elevator and how many, and you fix it, it's broke. It's just very, very annoying what goes on because it's sitting outside in an enclosure that, there's no way to keep it waterproof, no way to keep it watertight. It just gets wet. And it's a problem, it's not only a problem here, the VFW's got ones broke all the time, it's just, it's not the fix. This is the fix. So the town of Hanson's going to vote for us, I believe Whitman will be voting in May and that will be the fix for that project. That's the explanation. So entertain a motion to accept? Do we already have that, I believe? And that was my discussion. Do you have any questions? Bob's here, I'm here, Jeff's here. That's really what's going on. I mean, it's broke all the time.
Oh, plus, it doesn't pass inspection.
Right. We're out of compliance.
We're out of compliance, it's not passed inspection.
Anyone else? All those in favor? unanimous, thank you. Okay. Next up is discussing the recently anticipated increase in the unrestricted general government aid with chapter 70 for Whitman-Hanson, number 7010-1192 filed to provide an additional $35,000 for technology rated expensive. Need to vote to accept it.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Fred?
It's, what that was is an earmark that Josh Cutler had placed into the House budget. And within the House amendments, they consolidated all the amendments, it flew right through. It is still subject to 9C cuts. Until we get the check, we shouldn't spend it. He said, "That's what Josh's office told me." But, you know, it is a welcome amount of money.
Any further discussions? Thank you, Josh Cutler. All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Job descriptions, in your packet, you'll see a couple of job descriptions, there's been some changes to the top of them, one of them, the title of Transportation Support Specialist is one of the changes. Is it something that you'd like us to pass over the first reading and go forward with? Is it something that you'd like us to pass over the first reading and then forward with?
Yes, if you would. If you look at both of them, one is the director of transportation, one is the transportation support specialist. If you go back a few years, basically, we had a director of transportation slash director of special operations. That was one title that went with the director of transportation. That person has since, we've had a retirement in the position and then it allowed Jeff and I to basically look at and say, what are we doing? How do we do it? Is there a way to make things cleaner and a little bit more efficient? So basically, the first one, the director of transportation, you had approved in September 19th of 2012. And that was the one that was the director of transportation slash special projects. Basically, now we're just saying, no, we have one director of transportation, the person's already doing it, that was the former assistant, it's Karen Villanueva. And this is basically a revised addition of that to reflect currently what we have as a director of transportation. That's the first one you're looking at. The second one you're looking at is what's called the transportation support specialist. What we found in the former title of director of special operations was something that was a relative gray area and there were never clearly defined aspects of what those special operations were. So what we tried to do in this was sit down and say, okay, in the two, three months that we've now been on board and we've been in this process, what do we need as far as transportation support help? And what do we need as far as greater efficiency and a streamlining process of district operations as it flows from the first floor to the central office to back? So this transportation support specialist would be someone who assists in the active transportation department. That is with onboarding of students, that is with the total registration of a student as it applies to their transportation needs. For example, I'll use the example of kindergarten. If you're a kindergarten student, you're basically, your transportation needs set forth by where you live, whether you go to AM or PM. So there are all these pieces that were part of transportation and part of this operations position that we had, that we tried to streamline. And that's what this is. This person, this transportation support specialist, would be housed right in the district operations area that we've defined, which includes facilities, which includes technology, which now includes transportation. And while they assist with the day-to-day maintenance of transportation, they'd also assist with things like the onboarding of personal registration, they'd also assist in the, the non-emergency communications piece that would go out to the district. What is a non-emergency communications piece? A play at the high school, we're having a.
Open house.
Open house. Barb Rogers is having a fifth quarter. All of those non-emergency pieces that go out to the people in the district would also fall under this. And it is just the streamlining of what was special operations. And we found that it wasn't clear and clean, so we've tried to make these two positions as clear and clean as possible. There is no additional funds that are being used from these two positions, it's just we're trying to streamline what we're finding.
So, so over the past couple of months, we're looking at processes, job descriptions, we're trying to be as effective and efficient as possible and having people understand what their jobs are. One of the things we found is, we didn't know who to ask for certain things because they didn't have a clear job description. That's what we're going to be coming to the committee for over the next year, I would say, as we try to streamline processes to make it more effective for communication-wise for parents, so they know who they're going to. One of the pieces we found this summer was, a student would register upstairs, would then go down to transportation, it was the AMPM thing, go downstairs for transportation. They would be assigned transportation and then the letter would be coming from, from my office about their assignment. It's a three-step process that didn't make sense to the two of us, so we're trying to reevaluate what we're doing to make it better for our community. And this is what we've come up with.
So, having a motion in a second to accept these job descriptions?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? We're accepting the job descriptions, I'm going to ask you for a motion to waive the reading. All those in favor who accept the job descriptions? An entertaining motion to waive the first reading and move right to accepting?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
Also, I think what Jeff and George are doing, because I saw part of it, is defining, there's like a chart of who you report to, they made this up during the summer, what your job descriptions are going to be and who you report to, so you know, the employees know exactly the order of where they go for, if they have a problem and how they get there. And this is part of that piece, am I correct?
Correct.
Correct.
We're trying to define people's roles and we actually did create a flow chart from the superintendent's office, delineation of duties through the assistant superintendent. So, in effect, there's a chain of command. So people aren't just bouncing from place to place and not, and getting different answers. We want a straight answer coming forward, again, to parents and students and teachers, who to, who to ask that question to so we have a similar answer across the board and people know where they're going.
Okay. Also, we yearly do this, we have to accept the handbooks for the facility, the faculty and the students. You want to go through the changes, it's in your packet? I will go through that if you'd like, or I would entertain a motion to accept as presented in the packet?
So moved.
Except as presented.
Second.
To present, to accept as presented.
Right.
Sure.
Any discussions?
Does it, I, I was going to ask Dr. Jones, because he'll start with the high school handbook because there's a couple of changes I think the committee should notice.
Okay.
Chris?
Dr. Jones?
We made him stay late.
At least I could do his talk, right? Just a few things to go over there. If you look through the memo as it's written up, there's 11 updates or new items, six of those are just for clarity. One of those is just to go through, change names, update names, so they're all current and they make sense. Typical thing for the year. And then, three, there's one new item that we have, which just has to do with phys ed non-participation issues where the students don't necessarily have to have or aren't excused automatically for a medical note, there are alternative assignments made up for them, so they're aware of that. And then, the one that they're, that you maybe want to be made aware of, is we have three updates that are around the idea of vaping. The biggest one is number five on that memo that you got. And that has to do with how we are now looking at E6 vapes, other similar products like that. Due to the, due to the large issue of vaping that is present in every high school and it's really become a pervasive issue, we've decided to move the consequence to a heavier consequence and actually classify the vaping piece as drugs, under drugs and drug paraphernalia. Due to the, the presence of nicotine in every piece of vaping and the prevalent presence of THC in a lot of these vaping oils and our inability to tell, that's what we're moving it to as, away as a deterrent. We're trying to up the punitive measure as we look at other ways to stop that. So that's, that's the biggest change you'll see in number five. All the students have been made aware of that in their class meetings today. We discussed with them that it used to be, you'd get two extended detentions, which is the equivalent of about five hours of detention for your first offense, it's a progressive system. Now that moves to three days out of school suspension for possession and so forth. And what we're trying to do with that is one deter and also try to get students to realize that they need to let us know if something like that's going on. So if it's in the bathrooms because it's hard to detect, students can give us more of a heads up so that they're not caught up in that and things like that.
Questions? Dr. Jones? Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Any further discussion before we move to vote to accept as presented in your packet? All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Acceptance of gifts. Dear Superintendent Simon Ek, I am requesting the acceptance of 100 used kindergarten chairs and nine miscellaneous tables from surplus from the Salem Public School District to the Whitman Hansen Regional School District. Thank you for your consideration. Christine Suko, Executive Director of Business Services. An entertaining motion to accept?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous, gifts are always easy. There's nothing to declare surplus? There are no field trips yet? We're going to move to subcommittee reports, warrant subcommittee. I have a bunch of warrant subcommittee minutes to approve.
Yes. Motion to approve as presented in the packet?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Warrant subcommittee report is done. Policy subcommittee?
Haven't met.
Okay. Facilities and capital improvement subcommittee?
Have not met.
There is some discussion and I think, Fred, you were part of that discussion, just so the committee knows kind of where we are with it. The facility subcommittee usually was meeting every single time before a school committee meeting. That may change to every other meeting or as needed.
As we have projects.
Yeah, as projects move along, but it may not be needed every time. I'm not looking for a vote, I'm just making you aware of, this is some of the discussion that's going on. Fred, do you agree with that?
I agree and we'll probably have some sort of encapsulated facilities report within the superintendent's report that would just keep everyone up to date.
Okay. Everybody, any questions? Legislative update?
Can I read a quick one from Josh Cutler?
Yes.
So, currently, the minimum per pupil increment was raised from $20 per pupil in Governor's H2 budget to $30. The Chapter 70 line item overall was funded at $4.9 billion, an increase of 3.4%. Unrestricted government aid was funded at $1.1 billion, an increase of 3.8 over prior year. Charter of school reimbursement funded at $90 million, an increase of 8.4%. Special Ed cert breaker funded at 319 million, an increase of 25.6 million, which represents a 72.5% reimbursement rate. A list goes on, but.
A little better than expected, which was good. Fred has some.
Fred?
And just the one, they, they don't distribute it proportionately, so a 3.5% increase on Chapter 70 doesn't mean that they're giving us a 3.5%. We received, what was it, did we get 100 grand in Chapter 70 increase? Yeah, so. Just over 100 and that's out of.
Well, there's a formula involved is what it comes down to. It's why don't, that's why you don't receive 3.5.
Correct. It all goes into the foundation budget and the minimum contribution per towns, you know, et cetera. But, you know, we still, we have a budget that escalates at, you know, a small percentage and then you don't even get 1%, you know, from the state. Although, we appreciate everything that our state reps do to fight and try and get us as much as possible. Just want to sort of.
And we know that both of our reps, Josh Cutler and Jeff Deal are fighting Whitman Hansen, because I've heard from both of them personally.
Yep.
Want to thank them.
Just a question, I see on the TV commercials, you know, Governor says we have a $1 billion budget surplus? I just want to know when the funds are coming away.
If, you might want to go to Salem and get your, your crystal ball out to find that number.
Imagine that, we have a budget surplus and we don't get it.
We missed one.
Not to change it, but we missed, there was a policy subcommittee, not necessarily an update, but Anne Marie Martin from MASK did send an email on August the 6th that said that all of the changes that were previously made by the policy subcommittee, the online manual is now online and up to date. So I just wanted to make sure for the record that we introduced that, that that was also, that's what had taken place.
Just so the committee knows, as you know, we're getting, we pay for that particular service to upgrade us so we don't get any out of compliance violations. We've, we voted that approximately, I want to say, a year ago to do that, so we would be in total compliance and not get into any issues with that, to add to that. So, that's automatically updated. Any other thing else legislative? Pilgrim, excuse me, pilgrim area collaborative?
So, we're going to start September 25th, but that's the budget subcommittee, which I've been on the past few years. There's just two of us as members of the board, plus our treasurer, business manager and our executive director. First full meeting for the board is October 4th. Maureen Goggan is still until November, it's before the 11th. She will be, she's our executive director. Dipna Thomas has been at our last two meetings, which was, were in June and she'll probably join us in October, but she does not begin until a week before Maureen is leaving and that was planned that way. But we're going in to start our budget already, at least with the subcommittee and to get moving. It was, I think you may all recall, it was a little over $8 million FY 2018.